We have is reported in this.
This is, this is all general fund reporting here. Obviously, the, the other funds don't impact our, our general fund.
But when, when, when can we get a report of those?
Well, we'll go through that as part of the, the budget process, um, this, this coming Wednesday.
You're asking about other funds outside of.
Other funds outside of our general budget. How many, how many other accounts do we have outside of our general budget?
We have, you know, proprietary funds, we have, for example, we have EMS, uh, which is a, a large fund. It was over, um, you know, revenue and expenditures amount of about four million dollars. Uh, we have, um, you know, of course, uh, the, uh, the golf course is, is, is handled as a proprietary fund. Uh, we have a number of special revenue funds such as, uh, railroad, economic development. All of those type of activities are.
So from on here, what it shows, just go to, just go to railroad fund account. It shows one number.
Shows the, the actual cash there and there's a half a million dollars that was reimbursed by EMS. So that's not on this report. When you look at the cash accounts, is that the.
Yeah, I'm looking, looking at the cash accounts. So what, when the proprietary fund for solid waste checking.
Solid waste, yeah.
Yeah, how, is that a, do we stay about the same amount every year? Is that, has that been growing?
Well, what, one thing that happens with that fund is, uh, when we get to the end of the calendar year, um, that fund actually owes general fund because we're, uh, you know, they've got, you know, they, they collect the fees at the end of the year. So a lot of the costs associated with, uh, that contract, the solid waste contract, uh, solid waste contracts that were, you know, probably about one point two million dollars.
Do we pay them monthly?
We pay them monthly, but of course we collect it on an annual basis.
So the collection versus what we bill monthly, you're saying we owe more or they?
Well, what happens is during the year, after we collect, uh, you know, property taxes and everything, at that point in time, then we're able to reimburse, uh, general fund because we're effectively writing checks, uh, paying for that contract and, you know, of course, the collections don't take.
So we're, you're, we're, you're behind on as far as collections versus.
It's in arrears.
So is, to the, is the amount that we are, uh, billing, does it cover the actual amount that's being?
Well, I think one of the, we've been having some discussion, in fact, with, kept just this past week. One of the, one of the issues is, of course, that is billed on a property tax bill. And we've got, you know, folks that, you know, they may have homestead. And so that's the only, uh, that's the only amount that shows up on their property tax bill. The problem ends up being, in terms of collection, you can't actually, um, you can't actually force that collection through, uh, like a property tax bill.
Tax sale, we can't put the tax.
So that, the, the fees end up being, uh, more of a, a challenge. So it's, you know, we may be billing enough, but we're not fully collecting everything that we are billing because of that. Some of our residents just aren't paying that fee, uh, when they get the property tax bill. They're not paying their tax bill and we can't, we can't go to sales.
So that, I mean, but that does not, we pay, we always pay out more than what we take.
Yeah, and I think we've been subsidizing that a bit too.
Do we know how much? Can we get an estimate about how much? You don't have to give it to me tonight, but can we?
No, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good hundred thousand dollars that we're subsidizing. I think we really need to look at that.
Okay. Yeah, that, I mean, that was one of my questions I had about how, I mean, if we're collecting that amount or not.
Let me, let me ask you a question, if you don't mind, counsel.
Go ahead.
Um, about the trash, um, can you touch on if it's feasible to do it resident by resident? Like you do over in Dillon County, like you do some other counties where they actually do the collection and they just bill it?
They build a.
They build a house on a monthly basis so that it, that would take more manpower, of course, or more with the, um, software, that kind of thing? Is that something that?
I think one of the challenges is, and I know that when the, the county moved towards, um, placing that fee on the, the property tax bill, the benefit to the provider of that service is they were assured of getting paid, you know, from us, where if they were providing that service to the individuals, they might not get paid or they may not even get, you know, those, those individuals might not even, uh, get, get the service either. So, uh, the, the problem is if, if we're not collecting on behalf of the trash company, I think the, maybe the service as well as the rate would also increase significantly. I think our, our rates are more competitive as a result of the fact that we're doing the collection.
Because we're subsidizing.
Yeah, we're, we're subsidizing plus we're also collecting on behalf of.
Ensured it's more, more customers.
Yes.
Mr. Park, I just have two questions.
Sure.
Page sixty, if you can turn to your book.
Sure.
On page sixty, I'm just concerned on the account number that ends with, uh, starts with five oh and zero one zero zero, zero zero oh one. Question, um, that account in January had over five hundred thousand dollars.
And which one was that? That was the treasurer.
Then in February, I pulled back my book, it got down to one thousand five hundred and ninety seven dollars and twenty seven cents. Now it's back up to a hundred and twenty four thousand.
One thing that happens, the, the treasurer does reimburse on a monthly basis. So the reimbursement may have taken place, you know, after we had, had prepared the report. Uh, so that, that balance does fluctuate a lot. The fees are collected and then they're, uh, then they're distributed. So these are more or less holding accounts. All of these accounts are, are holding accounts and then they're transferred to various taxing authorities. For example, like with motor vehicle, uh, that amount, you know, is started divided up among not only the county, but city of Beninsville, you know, Clio, um, or, you know, London McCall. So we, we make, and then of course we distribute, uh, to our own, you know, EMS, uh, has got separately stated village, uh, you know, as well, so.
And then the bank card account, is that for all the counts, for every card in the county? Or how is that, I mean, is that the money that's in here now?
Bank card account, that is actually, uh, that is a, uh, a credit card account that holds funds and then those funds are distributed. So those are amounts that are paid via credit card.
You say hold funds.
Paid to us.
They're paid to us and then they're distributed. Uh, you can see all the funds sixty fives are, uh, accounts that distribute, uh, funds of all the different taxing authorities, whether it's the county, the cities.
So the biggest question I had was with that real estate checking account.
Right.
There was eight million in there for January.
Uh, yeah, and that was right after all the collections took place. So, uh, there was, there was a lot of, uh, obviously a lot of taxes.
So these balances on, on each one of these sheets, I just asked this question, the balances on page fifty eight, fifty nine and sixty. These are not money that's in our general fund?
No, they're not in our general fund. So we've got ones, our general fund, you can see on page fifty eight, the first, uh, five bank accounts are general fund.
First five of the general funds.
Yeah, so we have operating account, we've got a local, uh, government, um, account. We've got a local option, uh, we've got, you know, building codes, recreation accounts. So all of those are general fund bank accounts.
So this general fund fee that I see here, is, why is it not adding up to what's on this report here? It's going to be two, like we had two point five million now, how is that at four point five?
Um, where, where's the?
Okay, like when you give this report telling us what's in general funds.
Oh, we're talking, I'm, I'm giving you revenues and expenditures. I'm not giving you cash balances. Cash balances are separate on this report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Park, it seems like finance has a lot of moving parts.
There, there are, there are.
My question is, let's say you went to Bermuda and you got so happy that you wanted to stay a month. Is there anybody in the county right now that is equipped and knowledgeable to pick up right now and be able to carry us through the next, through our budget? Is there anybody right now in the county staff that is knowledgeable of every single thing?
I'm very appreciative of the, the staff member that I've, I've hired. Probably it's been five or s- probably about five months ago. Uh, his name is Michael Jenkins and he's, he's doing a great job and he's really picking up very quickly.
Please let Michael Jenkins please come in and to the council so we can meet him.
Don't know nothing about it.
And, and, cause that, that, my, my, my question is, you know, and my, my concern is, um, you've been doing this a long time and I know you're tired.
Well.
We need to be confident that there's somebody waiting in the winds. God forbid something happens and we still should be in great fiscal shape, you know, without, you know, Mr. Park and his expertise in all of these moving parts. Cause thi- this is a lot and it's gonna, it, it takes about three or four days to really and truly try to reconcile in my mind, you know, these, these moving parts.
How all this works, yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're in good shape, just in case you go to Bermuda and don't wanna come back. So please invite Michael to the next, council meeting soon.
Do that, and maybe, maybe he can, he can come to the, uh, the budget workshop. I think that would be a great place, um, either that way, um, I think that's a, that's a really good form.
And I, I know we have, we have money and, uh, I think we said investment, whatever it's called, for each account.
Right.
Uh, could we get a bottom line, what's in each, like the railroad, economic development, like federal inmate check in? I mean, all of those things, cause I'd like to see a bottom line number for each one of them. I know we've invested some, we've invested, but I would like to see a bottom line number on a report, just so we can accept.
So you're talking about, e- even though it's some of, it is an investment, but what would it be if it wasn't an investment?
Yeah, just take the press call, I, I, I don't, you know, I wanna know what it is.
Cash.
Right.
Yeah, so each, each, each account, wherever it's at.
When we're reading the, uh, the accounts, one thing you can see, the first three digits is a fund number. So like all the six, oh oh six, general fund, uh, for example, solid waste is oh nine. Uh, EMS is oh thirty five, so you can see EMS has actually got three, well, they've got two accounts. Uh, but anyway, yeah, I'd be glad to kind of go through that.
I looked at that golf beverage account, it's been at the five thousand for the past three months.
It, it has, we, we opened that account with the anticipation that we'd be writing checks from them when deliveries took place. And I think the, you know, the, the, the treasurer wasn't comfortable with us actually utilizing that. I think maybe that will, um, that will be something that will, will change here. So anyway, but that's, the idea was that we would utilize that bank account rather than having to, you know, cut a check through, I mean, it's one they may as well, they want to get paid immediately. So that's, that was what the, we were anticipating, utilizing that bank account for that purpose.
And one more question, with the debt service account, the oh one nine, that was at the bottom.
Yes.
Started with close to a half a million, four hundred and ninety nine, half a million dollars there, what happened with that?
What will happen is we've got payments that take place in this year. And what, what we see is as we, we receive collections from, uh, from the tax levy, but then we have scheduled debt payments that we issued from that bank account. So depending on when it is that we, um, you know, we're looking at the report as far as, you know, what the balance is gonna be in that account. Because, you know, we just made a payment, uh, on a principal interest payment, then obviously that, that balance comes down, but it'll, it builds up during the year, uh, prior to making, you know, payments.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
And then the, the last part of my report is just on the projects, the capital projects. So I don't have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer those, that's enough.
Mr. Parker.
Good evening, council, I'm just trying to keep this waiting, this is a question for a while. But I do wanna talk about one specific thing, well, couple specific things I want to start out. Um, you know, we heard a, a news story a few Fridays ago, uh, that was concerning casino in Marlboro County. And I'm gonna be the first one to tell the citizens, Marlboro County, there has been no decision or even discussion about bringing the city of Marlboro County anywhere. And before anything happens, first of all, have you passed a covenant? Has it even come out of, out of, out of commitment? Um, and this council, and this council alone will make the decision to bring that here. And they will definitely get input from the citizens of Marlboro County. Despite the interview everyone saw, we have not spoken to any developers, landowners, casino companies, or even Department of Commerce. And they're telling me who to talk to first, when these things come in, they'll call us telling us. We haven't heard from any of these entities about anything. Um, I'm sure everyone heard the, the, or saw the interview with Mr. McNeil, but he only responded to a question about the potential job impact. It was not an announcement, I want everybody to really be clear, it's not an announcement, it was just, uh, under that. And, you know, before anything like that happens, we know, we have to consider not only job growth and the jobs and growth, we gotta also consider safety, crime, the human impact of such an endeavor. So, uh, whether you support or, or oppose, notices have been made, we haven't even begun to consider it because we don't even know if it's even legal. And so, uh, just wanna make sure that it's out there, that they're actually truth about that situation. Everyone in the council agree, you, we have not talked about anything about it, casino in this county. That's not come to any kind of vote, so that's not anything that's, that's in Marlboro County, so, um.
And do we know how the news media got that information and buried it before they asked that question?
So the news media got that, I got it from, I mean, a, a lot of these news agencies, they will go and look for different bills. Or they'll search on the state website, bills, or they may get checked off by a representative that helped, uh, bring it to the floor. And when that representative introduces it, sometimes they wanna get things stirred up and they'll call people around the county, around the state. And, and, and it can come that way, they can look at themselves, but it's public information, you know, once a bill gets filed. Um, and once it gets filed, then it's really fair game, they can go and they put it, I saw it, that interview happened on Friday. I saw it myself for the first time Wednesday night, was the first time I saw it. I called my father and he's in the house with the visitors, asked him about it, he knew about it, but he didn't know much about it. So that's how far it had, had not got, he's on the Ways and Means Committee, so he, he had not seen it yet. And so it, it has not, it is not gone very far, so, but, but the news media got a window of it and they kind of really put it out there. So, um, that's where that came from. Now, I do wanna mention, um, a needs assessment, public hearing. So if everyone can recall, there was a needs assessment that, where we had the forms that people had to fill out. And so that needs assessment, uh, public hearing is gonna be, uh, based on housing, public facilities, and economic development. What does this community need? That, that public hearing will be Tuesday, April twenty second at twelve P M. I just got notice of this today, so that's why I have been advertised, just got notice today. Um, that public hearing will be there and what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna make sure we advertise that, um, to, to the general public. And I, um, we're gonna put some newspapers as well to make sure it goes there, we're gonna put it on our social media and on our website. We're gonna do everything we can, we're gonna post it, and that will be here at twelve o'clock, April twenty second, that public hearing. So we do everything we can to get that out, um, for that public hearing for needs assessment. Any questions about that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So it can be clear, the needs assessment will entail what? I mean, you keep saying it's a need, these assessment, what, what, we, we, the people have something to talk about or?
Yes, it will, it will be about the, the needs of Marlboro County as relates to housing, as relates to public facilities, and as relates to economic development.
So will they have a form to fill out or it's just gonna be an open discussion?
No, it's gonna be an open discussion, right here.
And you said two, two o'clock?
Twelve o'clock.
Twelve o'clock.
April twenty second.
In, in this building?
Yes.
How many people you anticipate?
No, I, I don't, I don't know, and, but, I, I don't know.
What, what will we do with any data that's brought to us?
Um, that, that came from, um, the newsletter came here from, what was it, the, the? I looked at the original, I'll leave it over there. But it was from the equal opportunity housing, um, and that was, I don't even remember, and I have the official notice right here, I just got. But this is, it, it, um, notice from C D B G, C D B G Community Development Block Grant, needs assessment, public hearing. They get this information and then they determine, or they hear from the community about the needs of different community development block grants that we may be able to get in Marlboro County. Again, with, with new developments, uh, federally, I'm not sure what we'd be able to get, uh, here in Marlboro County based on certain, uh, factors, but they're still gonna do a hearing just to see what we, what we need in Marlboro County based on the citizens' input, and that's where that comes from.
And what date was that again?
Um, Tuesday, April twenty second at twelve P M. Now, I can easily go back and request a larger space if that's what, you know, we, we wanna do. If, if that's what feel like is necessary, I can go back and request.
No, I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I see, I see, I, I don't know how many people would come, I mean, I didn't.
Yeah, this is what I just, I, I just received.
This comes from who, who, is it C D B G?
Yes, C D B G Community Development Block Grant. We work together.
That's who's appreciating what kind of people.
And so you're gonna advertise it in the newspaper, where else?
Newspaper, our website, and our social media.
What about your sign then?
Oh, and Brock's, sorry, Brock's sign as well, yes.
So would this information be specifically used for Marlboro County but not for the C D B G? Just to get information to get grants on their own without allocating, you know, those?
No, this is for what Marlboro County needs, this is for Marlboro County needs. And again, if you remember, when we had those needs assessment, um, sheets out, I know you took a bunch of.
I have some, I have about two hundred.
Right, and, and, you know, they were, they were invited to get some, we had it in the office over here, and Regina, she was heading that up, and she.
So do I turn that over to Ms., Ms. Virginia or who?
Regina, yeah, you bring it back to the, up into the front desk and, and handle it whenever you have it.
Water and sewer was a big issue, and that's a big issue in this county.
And it's a big issue all over the county, as far as, not just here, but all over the county, there's, there's sewer issues.
Sewers.
Water and sewer issues, so, um, we hope, we hope we do get a big turnout. And if we need to change, I need to know, you know, if we think it's gonna take a, a larger venue, because no, this is not a large venue for something, uh, like that. If we get a really good community turnout, they'll be all standing in the hallway, we may need to get a bigger place. But that's something I, I'm gonna tell her very quickly if that's something we can do. And in fact, just in case, since it's public, we can move to the, I don't know if that day is available, um, because it's more costly because it's public, you know, event, um, over to the public. And, and so I, I, I will consider doing that, moving it to a bigger space, if that's what, you know, you might think that we need to do, um.
I just think if, if the information gets out there and people make plan to try to be there.
Right, right.
It's Easter weekend too, holiday, so people will be home.
Okay, um, the last thing, I did wanna, uh, ask my, uh, chief of public services, Mr. Chad Sher to introduce our new animal control officer. Um, you know, he's doing some really good work, guys in the field, and, and got engaged and got there the first couple of days. And so I would like her, him to go ahead and introduce.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, um, before I introduce her, there was a question earlier, ma'am, Ms. Lawson. You asked why, or you were asking about a salary on the animal shelter budget. For whatever reason, over the years, I talked to Wes, um, the salary for the animal control officer is listed on the humane society budget, but it's not part of the hundred and fourteen thousand that we give to them for animal operations. It's kept separate, but that's why that's listed like that on there, ma'am, you had a question earlier.
I, I did, but it's actually, but it's, it's not a part of the one fourteen.
Correct, but it's, it's on there for that, that's why. So, uh, on the thirty first of March, uh, we hired, uh, Ms. Bree Carroll. She, uh, was a firefighter for the city of Beninsville, fire one, fire two certified, has some experience with, um, animal shelters. And also, uh, she blew the board away when she came before us, Ms. Doris and I held the board, and she did a fantastic job. And we wanted to welcome her, so if you wanna stand up, you can say hello.
Yeah, so I'm, um, Bree Carroll, like I said, I started, uh, thirty first, um, but yeah, I've got a lot of experience, I've got a lot of certification. Um, so I'm, I'm proud and honored to, to be a part of Marlboro County and I'm ready to serve y'all how I can.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minister.
All right, thanks. Uh, did, did you have any questions about anything, uh, that Mr. Mr. or?
I, I had a few, I didn't get to make last meeting, I mean, my mom was, I, I met my mom, you know, so I, I think Assessor Coleman, he actually presented some things and he had some questions, but, uh, you know, I, I had a few questions, maybe you can answer. Uh, the reassessment, uh, is gonna be done or is it being completed already?
Um, it's not all completed, it's, it's not all completed.
How far along are we with that?
Right.
Do we know how far along we are?
Now, that's a question, percentage wise, I, I'm not sure, that's a question on the cap, I mean, we should be closing it up, um, soon, but that's, that's something that we have to ask to ask more.
He indicated that by August it'll be finished because then they have to do that assessment stuff.
Right, right, cause they have to be done before we.
So he, he indicated like he was about finished with it.
Yeah.
So the, the assessment from what I'm hearing is gonna be what is allowed by the state, top, is that, is that correct?
Well, what, what happens, uh, a property is appraised, in the event the appraisal exceeds, um, fifteen percent, well, fifteen percent is the cap, so very, most, most likely, most properties are going to see a, an increase in assessment of about fifteen percent, we're talking five years worth of appreciation. And of course, you know, when you, you look at what, what's happened with real estate prices over the last, you know, particularly since the pandemic, they've certainly spiked a lot. So I think you are gonna see, uh, an increase in assessment, most properties will most likely see at least fifteen percent in increased valuation.
So the national median is one point oh two percent, correct?
What's that?
The, it says the national median of the property tax rate was like across the nation is one point oh two percent. And so the Marlboro County is just point seven five percent, correct? Or you may be, you may not gonna answer that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, that, that term. I, I, are you saying the, what the, if you take the value and you multiply it by a percentage, that's what?
Yeah, cause originally about.
About the tax rate would.
About five years ago, we did, we went up about eight percent, correct?
Right.
So this year we've gone, we're, we're saying we're projected to go up at fifteen percent.
Probably on most properties.
So on most properties, so what I did, you know, that, I, I pulled some things, so just as far as what I found out is from we're doing a fifteen percent across the board, what I found is the, the highest median tax rate in Marlboro County is the Wallace, people that live in Wallace, and that's about ninety five percent. Other counties is about sixty, other parts of the county is about sixty two percent. So whenever we were gonna bring up people up a few years ago, to get everybody up to where, cause we hadn't done it so long, to get everybody up, it was supposed to be adjusted to figure out, we get everybody to where? to get everybody up to where, cause we hadn't done it so long to get everybody up, it was supposed to be adjusted to figure out, we get everybody to where the actual assessment value is, whatever they owed, that's what they pay. Which is on, which is only fair. So if we do, from what I gather, from what internet tells you, and so what you gotta gather from ourselves and everything else is the, the citizens or my constituents in the Wallace area is about ninety five percent. So other parts is sixty two percent. So if we add fifteen percent to the constituents of Marlboro County just across the board, that's gonna put my constituents at one point ten percent, which is point oh eight percent higher than what is across the nation. So I would ask that we really look at what we're doing because if somebody was already below a long time ago and they only come up at eight percent, all new houses already at the top level. And so if we're gonna bring everybody up to be fair across the board, we have to get some of the ones, you know, that was way out of whack back up to where it is and where we're assessing people, everybody's still paying fair, uh.
I wouldn't think that anybody would be assessed above their market value.
Pulling that off the internet, so. That, I mean, I, I swear, it's probably a tax assessment question so we can get him in here, uh maybe at the next meeting before we get too far into it.
Or, or, or to the workshop, I mean we could do.
Yeah, it'd be good for the workshops, I, I, I do, I do have some, some questions, you know, about data, cause you know, back when we approved it along, back years ago, four or five years ago, we changed it so anybody build a new house, they'll be paying at the top level because you want, you know, so all the new houses are already here. You know, if you're putting in new mobile homes, new houses, new whatever additions, whatever else, you're paying at the top. And so, uh, so I mean, and everything should be captured. And so it's not that, uh, don't want anything captured, we want everything captured, but we want everybody to be able to pay in, I want everybody, especially whenever I find the uh majority, it's out, out of whack from what the data, so maybe we can get the assessment people to study.
Because I wanna be sure that he said that they are, but did they, we, did we hire another person to help him assess the taxes? Did, did, did he get extra help? Cause that was a part of the budget last year.
Right, and so he is, he's getting a, an appraiser.
He's getting one or he has one?
Well, he has one appraiser, but he's supposed to have, he's not supposed to have three. He's getting another one, he's gonna get the second one, uh hoping this week or.
So, see this is the thing, if we're almost about to the end age, why haven't that appraiser been?
No, he, he's gonna need it ongoing, it's not just, just for that project, he's gonna always need an appraiser.
And they're going out, physically going out to see, see whether voters and all of those things are on the property.
I can assure you that every single property is appraised in person. We just, now, we don't, we would have, we would need five or six or seven appraisers to get every single property in person, we just don't have that.
I'm not knocking you, I'm just wanting to be sure that you instructing him, he's physically doing his best that he can to go out.
He is doing as many properties in person, you know, we're not just saying, okay, we're gonna look at a property, just arbitrary value, just going down in person and looking at.
Cause when he talk, well, a neighbor can just call, I see you've added to your house, or I see you got a boat on your house, he left it there, a person can actually report. I can make a phone call and say, I see that this person has added on to his or her property. And I just think, I don't want the citizen have to do their duty. I want them to do their own duty.
Well, let me just, let me just, and, and I agree with that, let me just say this, we have Cap and one other person. He has just one other person right now, that's working, that is, is new himself and is big trained as he works, so they go out together. We have basically one team. And we have how many, um, residents and close to eight thousand, nine thousand residences? There's no way he's gonna get to even half of those with that one per, even in months. So some of that, uh, some people are not gonna get unless he gets it reported. So it's part of, but now once he increases his number of appraisers, then he's able to get more, uh, larger percentage of those houses done in person, but every, he spends every moment. When I talk to him during the day, he's out in the field getting things done in person, he's doing, doing as many as he can. And he's doing different, different areas, not just one area, not just another area, he, he's doing different areas with, with these uh appraisers, not just hitting Vanesville area or the Clive area or McCall or Wallace area, he's hitting all areas of the county, but he's doing it, uh it's basically him and one, one other guy that's doing that.
I'm, I'm just putting that out there, thank you.
And we, we bought that new software what, back whenever the last administrator was here, and so it's working correctly?
As far as, no, he's never complained about it, I mean, I can.
No, but we, we've never paid him yet, so he's, he's not, he's not satisfied yet, so.
Not me.
Pay who?
Well, what, what happens, we budgeted the ninety three thousand five hundred dollars for the last four years. So I think when he gets to perfection, he, he's going to request, um, you know, issuing payment for this software.
Who, Cap?
Yeah, Cap.
Is his software?
No, not his software, it's a company that provides the software to the county, but he is not, uh, he's not requesting payment yet, so I think there's still work that they're continuing to do with it.
So I guess, I guess the thing would be from, from, I guess, the way the council votes and that, ask questions and that, everybody's doing their homework. And so, uh, so with, I mean, so I, and I'm, I'm doing my homework, I mean, I do it on everything, so. The question is, you know, with the software, we purchased it, well, we're supposed to purchase it, I thought in installment plans is what we originally talked about, so.
That's, that's correct, we just need to purchase it again.
So it tells me if we're not, I mean, we're, we're almost for reassessment and so we don't, we haven't paid it, chances are we don't have it completely done. So from what I got, and I asked what software we were using, just because I wanted to know, cause Q S one is, which is new publics, which a lot of community, a lot of counties across the state use. Uh, so I, I looked it up, what it was, just probably should've looked it up before we ever voted on it, but that was, that was from me taking everybody's word and moving forward, so. Uh, I'll turn it on where everybody can hear me, I guess. So, uh, so now, I mean, I did go back and look at it and do we know how many other counties of South Carolina use this software?
Q S one?
No, the new software that we're using.
No, I, I don't know about the other counties.
Does anybody know?
I don't know.
Do we know how many, I, I can tell you from what I read, from, so, yeah, no, and, and I, I wa, I voted on it, I did, I, and I think all of us voted on it. But, you know, whenever you're getting, looking at it and you get wondered and you get, what, you know, you just, you just ask questions, you know, there's no other south county in South Carolina that uses this software. So my question would be, is it compatible with Q S one, which uses other things? So if you have a problem, which Chester County uses Q S one, which is public, I call them. Uh, Dillon County uses Q S one, uh Florence County uses Q S one, a lot of the counties in South Carolina use Q S one, it's eleven hour, but.
We use it for, uh, you know, accounting and everything.
Yeah, we use Q S one for everything. So now we have a new tax software in the reassessment year that from sound of it, from we haven't paid, it's not completely done, that no other county in South Carolina uses. So if there's a problem or if there's an issue or whatever it is, from now, whenever we have a problem or if the treasurer has a problem, they call another county or if the, if we have a problem with payroll, we call another county, how do you get this fixed? So my question would be, if we have a problem during reassessment year, who are we gonna call in South Carolina to be able to?
Well, I mean, you're asking a question, no one else is stopping us all, but again, I mean that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm asking questions, you know, it's, it's eleven hour, but I don't wanna finish the game and say, I wish I would've asked the question back then, so now I'm asking the question, uh.
Now, if I may ask, if I may ask a question, what year was that purchased?
Well, this is in the budget from, from the twenty twenty three, twenty, twenty, twenty three, twenty twenty.
Three, three, three years ago?
Three years ago.
Four years ago? More, is it longer than that?
Oh.
Longer than that.
So, so we've, I mean.
Probably twenty nineteen.
So, so we've got a software that we purchased in twenty nineteen that we still hadn't paid for, that we've already had on one reassessment, we're doing another reassessment and yet we're not completed it.
The assessment.
To us, do the assessment now, so that's the kinda things that I think this.
Well, I, I tell you, I, I think, I think we need to, um.
Have a workshop, have him here.
I need to have the assessor come back.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent, yeah.
With the workshop.
But I mean, that's, that's the things that whenever you say, well, where are we going, where are we at, how are we gonna get, where are we gonna go, you know, whenever something's. I, I think anybody that owes, whatever is owed to the county, I mean, I, I think it should be paid, I mean, it's only fair, you know, I, I mean, ju, ju, be, be fair to everybody. So I just think whenever we find out something, uh, we need to address it and bring it to the table and, you know, and that's the thing, whenever I was, I bless you, is whenever I found out, you know, looking, researching, you know, it's, it's time to bring it out to ask the questions, cause if you have a problem, how is it gonna be, who are you gonna call? If it's different, the website shows that there's twenty nine counties in North Carolina, three in Georgia that use this software that we've purchased, so. If it's changed since then, uh, they need to update the website.
Now that we have it, and if we're not gonna get rid of it, go back to Q S one or whatever.
We, we, we still have Q S one, uh, if I'm.
We do have Q S one, I don't want to add for that piece.
Well, I, I would, I mean, we're doing a reassessment, I guess everybody hears what I'm saying is, we're doing the reassessment and our software's not completed to do the reassessment and we purchased it in twenty nineteen. Either we don't have, we didn't purchase a good software or what happened?
Again, that's something that we need to get.
Uh, I'll be, and I hate, I wasn't here at the last meeting, I really hate I wasn't here at the last meeting, but, cause I, I had these, I mean, I, you know, I wanna ask and so I, I asked uh, like I said, so I asked whoever I could ask tonight, cause I wanted, I, I wanted to be known, so.
And, and we'll get those answers.
Thank you, sir.
Very, very soon, um, and, and I'll get that answer first, because I'm interested to know about the, the number of people that, and.
In the years of being producer of, yeah, that's.
But I, I, I'll, we'll get that answer very soon.
I would like that answer very soon.
Next, I don't know, twelve eighteen hours, we'll get that answer.
At least by forty eight.
I, I think you, I think you are due that.
Thanks, sir.
But as far as explanation and coming in front of the council, the next time this council convenes, uh, go ahead and check the assessment here and answer those and any other questions you may have.
And, and budget workshops, fine, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, the budget workshop, right.
Okay, all right. I don't have anything else for the council, any one of your questions?
No.
We do have a rodeo planned. We announced the rodeo.
Yeah, I do announce the rodeo, um, so this Friday, Saturday, my second annual rodeo, which we're, we're really good shaking with. Um, sponsored by, uh, Love Foundation and, um, Northeastern Tech and a host of local, um, entities that we will be honoring and making sure we have, um, uh, the information out there for you, but, uh, a lot of local support, we wanna thank everyone locally who has come out to support that, including, um, uh, the gin, the cotton gin plant, because they're, they're, uh, helping us access their, uh, peace department as well. And so, um, and the school district has, has been helpful. So we are having that this Fri- Friday, Saturday and it will be at our fairgrounds over in Marlboro County Fairgrounds, right behind the high school stadium. And it is twenty dollars to get in, uh, kids under six free, and we will have parking right there in that first area to get there on the left, where the grass is fully green over there, sure the cars are tearing up a little bit, but, um, we should have pretty good weather. We will have, we, we are forecasting to have a little bit of rain on Friday, um, and clear on Saturday, um, but that rain should be very early on Friday. And so we look to have, actually much better turnout than we had last year, um, on this one, um, I wanna thank Council Steve for his help with, really helping put that together and helping us stay on top of, uh, some of the little minor issues and some of the major issues that we've, uh, had with that, and so, um, we look forward to pretty good, uh, rodeo this year.
I want to say that for those who will be attending the rodeo, I hope they enjoy what's just as, as exciting that you and members of this council are excited about this rodeo. That's why I feel like we need to be excited about having some other recreation in this county other than a red rodeo, cause some of us are not gonna be the rodeo type people. So I'm just hoping that we, and that the bouncy house thing is good for kids, but there's still is a need to have some excitement for other things other than a rodeo and playing football, playing sports or bouncy houses, cause that still doesn't help the most population of this county. So just congratulations to you all on that. I hope that this time it'll be a success and bring in revenue instead of us losing revenue. So that's all I got to say on that one.
And, and I do respond to that, that, you're right, we, we need, we need activities for everyone and we're gonna have activities for, um, people of all ages and, and all economic levels, so, um, we're only gonna do some other recreational activities, bigger, big migration activities, and that's why we got the fairgrounds. Uh, because, you know, we, we talked about how we could do things for everyone there, big things, not just for people who like outdoors and stuff, not just for people who are younger, elderly, people who live inside the city, outside of rural areas, we can do all kinds of things in that fairground and we plan on using that for a lot of different activities for everyone. Um, so yeah, but I, I, we agree, we need to have something for everyone. And that was the purpose of getting that fairground.
Thanks, sir. Okay, hey, we just winding this, um, meeting down, we've got, uh, quit from citizens, um, Mr. Oldman, let, let you go first. Council members, council members.
Uh, let's see, com- coming up May the third, uh, the McCall Mayfest Annual Event, I think that's on, uh, that's a Saturday. Coming up first Saturday in, uh, May, uh, big thing I wanna talk about is newly elected mayor, uh, Robert Outlaw. Doing an outstanding job, he's been mayor thirty one days and, uh, he's just on top of everything, uh, anytime a citizen's got a complaint, um, had some today and, and I, they talked to me and, and Robert, Robert went to see him about some issues they had, so he's answering every complaint when someone calls and going personally to talk to him. Uh, appreciate the help, the county, Jamal and them have done this, helping us, uh, helping Robert with some things that, uh, should've already been taken care of, but, uh, anyway, appreciate all that help and, uh, it's just, uh, looking forward to major, uh, things happening in, uh, McCall and he's reached out for both the state and the county and, and federal officials to give him help and, uh, I just think that, uh, the future's bright for the town of McCall.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Jackson?
Uh, might as well keep on rolling, so. No, um, uh, I talked to, uh, D O T, the, uh, O I Road Bridge was supposed to be already open by now. They did pave it, the guardrails are up, and so, uh, they have just a few punch list items to finish, and so I was told by April the eighteenth. I think they still have a few, uh, punch list things, one of them's painting of the lines just for safety reasons, so I was told hopefully by next Friday, April eighteenth, O I Road would be opened up. So that was, been a long time coming. Told us a long time ago that would never happen, Detective Johnson, said it couldn't be done, but, uh, I guess we proved them wrong. And so, uh, so it'll be opened up right shortly. Uh, I heard that, uh, grass cutting bids is going out right shortly.
Grass, grass cutting bids are going out very shortly, Wes, we're gonna get that out tomorrow.
So if that goes out, we need to at least notify the people that had the contracts in the past, you know, so, uh, uh, you know, we were, once again, you know, it's kinda, we were told last year in February that the grass cutting contract will go out in March, April, May of last year, and here we are, almost ten months later, grass season's growing and now we're trying to to, to, to bid something that usually people look at whenever the grass is not growing, so, uh, but at least call, we need as many people bidding on as possible, but I would at least notify the ones that bid, bid last year. Uh, looking forward to the rodeo, hopefully good weather, a, a good crowd, uh, I think a lot of people's excited about it. And so, uh, like I said, I think there's still some asso- excitement to be, uh, to be had, but I think everybody had a good time last year. And you know, I think the mechanical will be back there.
It will.
Yes.
To the plug.
That's all.
Detective Johnson?
Um, just one announcement, April nineteenth, um, from the hours of eleven A M to about four, there will be an Easter egg hunt at the Brightsville, um, Community Park. All of these citizens are welcome to come out and bring their kids, free food, fun games, um, Brightville community has been really responsive and um, they're a little small area and trying to brighten their corners, so there's some good things going on at, um, one of the best parks in Marlboro County and that's the Brightsville Park. One thing I do wanna, um, say that is it's still dangerous on that highway and we need those signs up as quickly as we can get them. There was almost an accident, the kids are playing softball out there and T-ball out there now. And if you don't know where that park is before you come up on it, it's right there. And so we really need those signs, you know, up there, please, uh, check with D O T and see if.
I'm checking with them, and they still have to, they're just looking at, um, certifying us to be able to put those signs there, so we're still waiting with D O T.
Yeah, please check with them as soon as possible, cause I would hate to have a, a tragic accident, um, and there was almost one today, um, going to that park. It's real dangerous, if you don't, you going up and those cars are coming down thirty eight going seventy, eighty miles per hour. We really need, and that's a safety, safety, safety hazard, and there's a lot of kids in that area and if we have those, uh, signs up, then it will let people know that the park is uh, ahead so they can start selling that.
So you know, we did have signs up, D O T took them up from there, they took them up, cause we, you know, I had the guys put the signs out. And I, I understand that there's a procedure, but you know, we were having, we were getting right in the middle of, you know, a lot of kids being out there and, you know, I, and, and our, our public works guys, they put them out there as, as we discussed. And you know, I, and, and our, our public works guys, they put them out there, as, as we discussed, in the same area that they said they wanted them. But DOT took the signs up, um, said we had to go back and reapply, have them up there, so that's what we're in the middle of doing right now. So.
Make a phone call.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that, that highway has three times as much traffic as NTSB says is safe. So, you know, there should be an exception to put the signs up on that, on, on those.
Yeah, we tried to put them up, they took them back up, so.
Ms. Lawson?
I will be brief, but I do have three or four things I wanna say. First, I wanna thank, yes, I'm gonna make my comments.
Oh, no, no.
I'll, I'll make my comments. Um, I wanna thank the people who, who came out on with the spring cleanup. We had members from the Sheriff Department, the Attention Department, members from the Rotary Club, community members. Uh, in, in South Veniceville, there was a hundred and eighty-seven bags of trash collected. Um, I'm blessed that I picked up one hundred of those bags. We have pictures, so that was really great. And we'd like to try to schedule again another cleanup, probably late, um, maybe by the end of this month, send that in. And, 'cause people are asking about another countywide cleanup. I can't tell anybody about the countywide, but I am gonna promote a districtwide. So I would like to see that we have a cleanup, and I'll make sure I put those dates out there for District Four. But if the county decides to have something, that would be good. I know that the grass cutting season is going to be a need because grass beginning to grow. I know you're talking about for those specific areas, but I hope that the county will make sure that the communities are cut too. We don't want the grass to get so high that people are gonna complain, you know, in their neighborhoods. Uh, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I know that if Ms. Wendy Woods was here tonight, or Ms. Wanda Woods, they will be encouraging us to participate in the lemonade stand. So I would like to very much say that, um, we, we, we need to be aware of, of that. Wanna congratulate the Coroner Newsletter. I don't know whether anybody saw that, but they have a newsletter, and they're updating the information that we never had before. The number of deaths that's happening in the county, um, events that they're having. So I would like to congratulate that whole team for the job they're doing with, uh, the newsletter. Also would like to, uh, ask the community, uh, and this is a plea to the whole community. It's been since the pandemic that we had, uh, we were involved in Relay for Life. Cancer is very prevalent in our county. Had several people I've already talked with. Would like to make sure that even with the team of county officials, city officials, school board members, community leaders, let's look at trying to reorganize and get that relay walk again. That was very good for our county, the excitement. I've started with the American Cancer Society, but we needed, a group of us are gonna check to be sure that those funds are gonna come back to Marlboro County. So that's something I would like to say that I'm, I'm gonna be pushing out, but not just me, community leaders. And if the city, county, and the school district and businesses can be a part of that, that would be something great for this county. Because cancer is very prevalent in this county. So that's all I have to say, and I want to also thank their governor, thank the Humane Society members for coming out to the meeting tonight. Thank you.
I wish everyone the very best. Good night.
You took my speech.
And thank y'all for letting me say all that, so.
Okay. Um, gotta get a motion to adjourn. All in favor?